Chairman Wicker.
Chairman is present. You want me to go over the role or you are you gonna call it?
Here.
John Wolford.
You gotta turn your volume up Cheryl.
For some reason I'm not hearing you all, you are responding?
I wanna hear you.
Yeah.
Cheryl, if you have Bluetooth connected, it sounds like you're talking through a headset.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
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 Can you hear us? Cheryl.
It's uh, it's sounds like she has a Bluetooth headset that might be connected to her computer.
Yeah.
I like your backdrop David.
Thanks.
Is that your office or your study at home?
Uh, that's uh, that's my Zoom backdrop from last year.
Recording in.
People thought that I was a a little harsh in certain times and so that was just a joke.
Can everyone hear me now?
That's bad.
Yeah.
Yes. Can you hear us?
I can now.
Okay.
Okay, so um, I'll go, well Chairman, you're you're at a computer, you go ahead, the meeting is all yours.
Oh, okay. Thank you Ms. Hart, we'll call the uh, the February twenty eighth, twenty twenty two Planning Board to order and begin with the role of uh, call the role. Let's see, Ms. Gilligan. Is absent, Ms. Rogers.
Here.
Is present, Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Kinnelow.
Here.
Mr. Summers.
Here.
Mr. Walford.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Woodless. Absent, Ms. Edwards.
Here.
Mr. Cates. And is absent, and Ms. Evans. Also absent, uh, Ms. Harden, it appears we still have a quorum, is that is that the same count you get?
Yes, sir.
Then we will proceed with the uh, with the order of business and we will begin with the approval of the minutes from the January twenty four, twenty twenty two meeting. Have the members of the Planning Board had an opportunity to review those minutes and if so, is there any action to be taken?
Move the minutes be approved, Stan.
Motion to approve the minutes as they were recorded, is there a second?
Okay.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Hart, the next matter I have on the agenda is the Bramble County ABC Boards request for a text amendment to section five point three seven A of the um site design criteria uh, to permit the ABC Board uh, to have a location in central business district as a permitted use.
Yes, sir, so so that we're talking about um, amending the table of permitted uses um, to allow them. And also, we're asking if you um, saw on your attachment five point three point seven A and if you saw and read, that's what the amendment is about is the um, design criteria should not apply to expansion of existing governmental use. So that would allow um the ABC store expansion um, with the um, location of the park and being waived. And I've um, provided you all with a um with a building elevation plan. And you should also have received a site plan and in speaking with the engineer on this project who is included on this meeting, Preston Royster. Their dilemma was that with the loading dock, it would prohibit them from meeting that guideline. As you all um, recall at the last meeting, um, the applicants proposed amending the ordinance with standards. And when it went to the Board of Commissioners, it was discovered that the state guidelines for this type of establishment already have rules in place, so there was no need of overlapping in a type of requirements. So um, that's why we're back tonight for that as a permitted use. And also, that governmental buildings be waived of the section five oh, three point seven eight as um, detailed in the red marking. And um, Attorney Jared Quonis is here representing that request.
Mr. Quonis, if you would like it to be heard.
Evening Chairman and other board members, um, I'll just piggyback briefly off the summary that uh, Ms. Hart provided. I think she accurately summarized where where things are and what's being requested. Um, again, like she said, we're requesting the one, the part of the ordinance that prohibits the parking in the front, we're just requesting that that be um the text amendment be added that allows for that to not apply to an expansion of an existing governmental use. And then, instead of proceeding with it being permitted use with standards, uh, bringing it back before the board just for it to be uh, allowed just as a permitted use. And again, the the prior permitted use was standards was kinda done and brought to the board, uh, one in conjunction with uh, planning staff, but also um since the ordinance had changed to allow it, no longer allow it in that zone and jurisdiction. Again, in conjunction with staff, we were trying to make it very limited in its potential application, uh, just so it would um, be in a little more conformity with what the board was, but certainly the recommendation from um, council from City of Oxford to uh, or at least the, to bring it back for consideration, that be allowed for permitted use, uh, cer- certainly no, no objection at all. Um, certainly um, on board with that, I think that makes it easier and uh, it it was mentioned in the last meeting, the Chairman Rob Williford um just kinda went in and I think the question was raised, would there be a an additional expansion in this area, in this zone and jurisdiction, anytime in in the near future and um, to generally summarize his comment was any future use would like to be um, expansion for ABC would likely be in the more the southern, southern end of the community and he thought once this is done and this is built out that this uh, just serve the the local community uh, for many years to come and not need to be revisited anytime soon. Um, but again, uh, again Cheryl did a good summary of the application, be happy to answer any questions any board members have. Also point out, uh, Preston Royster, uh, be happy to, is here, is the engineer, uh, drew the plans and be happy to, um, he could chime in for any technical uh, questions and the board members may have.
Anyone on the board have a question of Mr. Quonis?
Uh, Cheryl, since I didn't get all these things you said were included. The site plan, is that the same site plan that we saw at a previous meeting?
I don't think it was, um. Did it, did anyone else get the um, plan that I sent? No one didn't get it?
I did not Cheryl.
I nailed it with this current paper you sent us.
I thought I had.
No, it didn't, no, we don't have a, I don't have a site plan, I've got the um, art, the thing about murals.
Okay.
Minutes from last month and the current meeting agenda, that's all that came.
Oh, I apologize for that.
Yeah, I I I think last month you gave us a site plan.
I think the guy showed us on the computer, that's what he did.
That was last month.
That was last month, he showed it, he shared his screen with with us, yes.
Yeah, I just looked through last month's and there's one, no site plan was in last month's either.
Right, I think Preston shared the screen, Preston, do you have that capability of doing that now?
Sure, give me one sec.
Thank you.
All right. Can you see my screen?
We can.
Yeah.
Okay. So, this is the existing condition of the site, this is the existing building and it's existing parking lot. Sorry about that, so this is what's proposed, the existing building is to remain. Um, the expansion will be behind the existing building, uh, the existing parking lot will be reconfigured, a couple of existing drives will be removed, this one will remain. Um, we'll have a new driveway on McClanahan Street and then parking uh, to the west. So the, the issue that we were having is getting access to the loan dock for the building. So in order for the trucks to get in and out, there's not enough room for them to turn around on sites, they have to have a one-way in drive and then they can back into the loading dock and then they can pull back out. So that's, that was the, the challenge that we had trying to push the building up all the way along the frontage.
Can you also share the building elevations?
Can you see that?
Yes.
Okay. So this is the, the front elevation on McClanahan Street. You can see the loading dock, this is the existing building and then this is the addition. This is the uh, western elevation which will be uh, seen from the fire station. I believe this is the rear. And this is the existing building on the east side and then this is the um, this is the existing building with um, some new break along the frontage or along the front or side. So this would be the view from New College Street. This is really the front of the building. Or the entrance to the building, I guess you'd say.
You say you were gonna reconfigure customer parking where the trucks pull in. You sure you're gonna have enough room for a truck to pull in there if you have cars parked?
Yes, sir, um, the parking is over here, so they've got all this area in here. Some maneuver through, so this is much wider than a standard drive aisle, these spaces are eighteen feet. Um, I don't have a dimension here, but it's close to thirty feet between this parking space and this short wall is needed to uh, for the grade change or elevation change between the parking lot and the loading dock. So yes, sir, I feel pretty confident that the truck can get in here with no problem without, or even park cars are parked in this area.
Parking is already, it's always been tight in there, so it looks like any improvement of parking would be a good thing.
Yes, this, this is the existing lot. It's, the standard drive aisle is not provided there, uh, between the two you know, two rows of parking.
Out of curiosity, what is the, what is the use of that parking lot chute on the right-hand side that has that one lane where people go park inside of? What is, what is the reason for that being configured that way?
This, this is the existing layout, so that's going away. I'm not sure why it's like that today. So, in the proposed layout, it's gonna be a drive aisle, so folks can drive in and park in these spaces.
I mean.
There's not enough room to put another row of parking over here unfortunately.
And I also like to add, um, from the last meeting, um the applicant was asked to provide um, modification, which they did at the, some landscaping. Couple more trees.
Yeah, I don't remember exactly which ones are added, but yes, we need to add some add additional landscape along the frontage there.
Would it be appropriate for me to ask a question as a non-board member of this group?
Does anyone else on the board have a, have a question?
I do, uh, Larry Thomas.
Go Larry.
I think that uh, this to me, I mean from last month's board meeting, I think we, we're in agreement and a unanimous vote that that this plan was, is a good plan. And I think that they're really asking for a variance and I think this would be more appropriately handled at the uh, Board of Adjustment rather than us taking up this matter.
In speaking with the applicant and we talked about that, that's just another layer of meetings to go go for, whereas if it was permitted for governmental use only that's a, that's a meeting and public hearing that's cut away.
Yeah, well, I mean, my, my feeling on that matter is, you know, if, if we allow it for government, we ought to allow it for everybody else, I, I don't see any reason to make an exception because it's an existing governmental building. I think we, you know, either either we go full forward with everybody that meets these criteria and allow their existing parking to stay or we go by the way the uh U D O is written, or O D U, or what, however the initials go, uh, you know, I, I think it's more of a, a variance than it is something that uh something that we need to take up.
I mean, and be happy to just address that briefly, I mean certainly a variance was, like Cheryl said, something we had discussed as a, as a possible option. One of the advantages of going forward with it through the Planning Board is that we were able to get that text amendment along with the permitted use uh, which was on there uh on, on today's agenda and allowed the project to not experience a, any delay, um, and hopefully if approved to then take everything to, to the town council, um. In addition I mean, there's no guarantee as far as what another board would do or consider as far as the merits of a variance application. Um, here, a, a text amendment, um, I'll, I'll say that's a legislative decision, so certainly, um, you know you guys are happy to, you know, do as you please there, but this would allow a very limited application, cause the text amendment I understand not wanting to, or at least giving that some thought that you, you may not want to do for a governmental agent, that you're not doing for, for everyone. Um, but this is gonna have very limited application, cause there's only but so many governmental entities in that, in this zoning district. Um, and there's also only, but and it's also just an expansion of existing use. And most things that are already built out, it's not gonna be an issue, so the application of this as an expansion of an existing governmental use will have a very limited application and allows us to get done in a timely and efficient matter, um without having to go through the Board of Adjustment and being at their beck and call to uh, hopefully approve.
Yeah, you know, I just hate that uh, you know, the, the thing wasn't caught before you know, we went to all this, you know, the ABC Board went to all this trouble, I mean, it's, it's it's a shame, but I mean, you know, we're dealing with a, a very large comprehensive document, you we have not scratched the surfaces on all the nuances and new regulations, so you know, my, my feeling is still the Planning Board approved it it just needs to go to somebody else to, to change it, so.
And, and again, the only thing I'd piggyback on that is, yeah, particularly when you have a, a new ordinance, there's a lot of times, I mean, it's a living, breathing document that a lot of times you're gonna have matters come up where you find things should be adjusted and sometimes as issues pop up, a lot of these issues can be handled at the Planning Board level. To me, I think uh, matters that should go before the Board of Adjustment should be a little more uh, limited in its application and matters that really can't be, aren't addressed through the ordinance currently, or aren't, aren't matters that can't be easily addressed in a reasonable manner, and here I think this is a very reasonable proposed text amendment that allows for um, a reasonable resolution to, to keep this project um, moving forward and to get it done without saying instead of approving it this way, we want it to be approved a, a different way and just go um, s- s- start um start from scratch somewhere else, um, to me, this can be handled at the Planning Board level and to me, that seems the, the reasonable and sensible way to, to attack it. Um, I don't think kicking it off to, to the Board of Adjustment is, is, is the right way, I think their Board, the Board of Adjustment should be a little more limited in its application, what, what it takes up.
Okay, well, we, we agree to disagree then, uh, you know, it's just like I say, it's just a shame that the that the conflict between what is drawn and what it says in the ordinance, you know, just doesn't match together, uh, and you know, I, I'm not gonna point any fingers at anybody, I mean, it's just a, just, just a mistake. And I, I can't think of any good reason for the Planning Board to review it again and have a lot of discussion over it, I mean, it, it's something obviously that from the last meeting, we wanted it, like it was submitted, we approved it like it was submitted not knowing that there would be a conflict with the uh wording and the, in the whatever number it is, three point five seven A or whatever, so. You know, I, it, it's just one of those things that happened and uh, we just need to move forward. And, you know, you may be right, but the Board of Adjustment is just one more meeting, I mean, we're having the second one already, so you're just gonna add one more, make it a third, so. I don't know what to say, except that's my opinion and I'm sticking with.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas, I know Ms. Dutra had a question, Ms. Dutra.
Um, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, really more of a comment and I, I um I only saw this today, so my comments would have, might have been uh, appropriate to get especially to Mr. Quonis early, but I have a couple of concerns here, um, one is, and I'm really here uh as one of the members of the Downtown Economic Development Commission. Of course, we've been very involved in downtown and we are very both proud of and dedicated to our downtown form design standards, um, it took a long time for us to get these in place and we're um, a little bit uh, covetous of them, um, I, and I have a couple of concerns, one is governmental use is not one of the ten defined new uses in our U D O, it falls under civic. And civic also includes recreational assembly and all sorts of things which make up, I would say, about half of our downtown or right now, a good fourth, third to a fourth, and um, my concern there is that we would have to make it fit our definitions, so the word governmental use would not be appropriate in this, uh, it should say civic use if it's gonna incorporate this whole um, set. And then in that case, it would mean the expansion, it's sort of an example, Mr. Chairman, of where the exception can swallow the rule and that's my concern, I absolutely think ABC stores should be permitted in downtown, I don't know how that got overlooked, that's not a problem. But making this text change to this portion of the design standards this really is future problematic for lots of uses downtown, that then it looks like we're just not gonna enforce our, our design of parking downtown. Um, I, I am intrigued by um, Board Member Thomas's comment because I did hear Mr. Preston say that um, part of the reasons for design was the hardship of deliveries, um, that the truck, they need, they need to go make deliveries here. They need to go get in and out of this site, um, they certainly have the right to expand their use if they're permitted. Um, but I would, I would think that putting this kind of application as a variant so that the Board of Adjustment could then appropriately look at, how do you offset that with what then might meet design, I see the landscaping, perhaps it needs to be of I don't know, that would be with the Board of Adjustment, but my thought is to amend the text of our ordinance in the design standards to really eliminate this standard then for a lot of downtown, really just whether or not we wanna help this use or not, really doesn't help our ordinance. And I ask that the Board consider approving the, the addition of the um, use to downtown as a permitted use, not a problem. But that they do not pass the text amendment, with all due respect to Mr. Quonis and his client.
So Laurie, are you saying to, you saying to make it a permitted use, is that what you're saying?
Well, that's part of the amendment is to add it to the permitted uses and.
Right, but you're saying just not doing it as a governmental, or you don't, you think it's doing it as a B C?
The ABC store would be permitted use, but it would need to meet the design standards.
Right, what, what design standards does it not meet Cheryl?
So that is five, three seven point A, location of parking spaces, which should be in the rear or side of the building, and this is making, with the new design where the front, the new building is fronting McClanahan Street, you have the parking in the front. Even with being an expansion.
My, my, um, you know, my concern with as far as the variances that, you know, I think it's something we might look at to change because to me for this to come in as a variance, um I, I don't know, it just seems like this, this is a, a practical uh, application of the ABC store and it might be something that we need to look at changing um, for the U D O because uh, this, if this has gotta be a variance, I'm just wondering what other um, problems we're gonna have out there with, you know, with those um, with that use, because it, to me, this is, this one seems to be pretty easy and I'm just wondering if we're, we're, I'm kinda, I'm almost the opposite of Larry where I'm worrying about are we gonna have more and more problems with just anybody trying to expand anything because of this uh, parking situation, being the parking has to be in the back.
Well, this standard is well proven in just about every city and small town across the state, so we'd like to see the standard stay, if this applicant um needs some, some flexibility, there's the choice of possibly, and, and like I said, I heard the hardship of the deliveries. That's not always a hardship um, in expanding your site when you can design it uh, to, to allow that, I guess this one, when they looked at that, they I don't know, I have not been involved in it till now, but I have a real concern from a downtown planning perspective with all we're doing in our comprehensive plan and everything else to put such a huge exception in our downtown CBD or design standard that will affect a lot of uses downtown that are civic governmental and everything else. To simply say it doesn't apply to them when they expand is, is huge in the downtown world, that's my opinion.
Well, I think one thing we, I think one thing we could do if we could, I, I, I agree with Laurie, you got a problem with the governmental, I think, uh, definition. I, I don't see why we can't just limit this to the ABC the ABC uh, buildings. And that was gonna. You're not gonna have a bunch of ABC buildings, so.
Yeah, and that was gonna be my next addition to, to the extent um the Board did not feel comfortable with, with that language or just to be too and I know um no, Mr. Thomas had the concern that, you know, didn't wanna carve out an exception that was available to, you know, to, to one or just to the governmental entities, but not available to all. But to me, I think you could this is gonna be a, an isolated incident, um, where you could have the expansion uh, be limited to perhaps maybe a, a store operated by a local ABC Board or um, organized pursuant to um, chapter eighteen B. And have it really limited, have it. And have it really limited, have it, it'll address this one issue and that may take alleviate some of the concerns that Ms. Dutra has raised as far as potential for parking outside of, um, in the downtown district.
I mean, just.
Mr. Chairman, may, may I make a comment?
Yes, go ahead.
So, I agree with a lot of things were said here. Um, the areas I take issue and it makes sense now that I've actually seen the plan because this clearly does not meet the design criteria um, that we have laid out in the UDO. Um, I am strongly against making any amendments to the UDO that would be specific to any one entity, whether it be civic, government, private, whatever the case may be. Uh, we designed, passed and implemented a UDO for a reason. Um, this clearly meets the definition of a variance. Um, and here's where I take a bit, ta- take an issue with the language for governmental use, um, that's outlined in this change. So if the Justice Center plans on expanding, which they have by all indications, talking to our peers in the county, they do intend to, uh, to do some, some work, uh, along Main Street, then this throws a wrench into that in terms of what they'd be able to do with, uh, the revamp of, uh, of, of the Sheriff's Office Building and any additional, any additional changes they make at, at and then around the courthouse potentially. And we do have a huge government presence downtown for, uh, for our overall size. So I would highly recommend, let's just stick with a, uh, let's just stick with a variance. Um, so, you know, this doesn't end up back in your lap again. And, um, you know, I understand there's an additional meeting, but tax amendments and, uh, and changes directly to the UDO to benefit this one project, it just seems to be out of bounds.
Attorney Quanis, are you there?
I'm here.
For, for the sake of time, and I know you all are, um, pressed for, um, getting this taken care of, would you consider, um, moving forward with the use being permitted by right and you all applying for variance with, um, being able to meet before the Board of Adjustment at the, um, meeting in April?
I think, yeah, I think that's something we could consider. Um, certainly hearing the, the tone and thought of the board and I certainly, um, a- a- all very valid points and I certainly understand where everyone's coming from with, with the concerns that have been raised. So, um, if that's going to be the direction, certainly we have, would at least request that the permitted uses continue to go forward that that then, uh, the, the recommendation be that permitted uses be allowed for ABC store in that jurisdiction, um, take that to town council or, um, or Board of Commissioners, um, and then, um, we can consider the, the merits of an application for variance.
Yes, so, um, the public hearing after we receive a, a recommendation tonight, the public hearing will actually be on March fifteenth for it being a permitted use. And then after that meeting, of course, we will have a Board of Adjustment meeting in April. So that will not delay you any further.
Be happy to get, get that together.
Okay.
Yeah, this is George.
Go ahead, George.
Uh, you know, we're talking about this parking front, has to be in the rear and all this stuff. We've got businesses downtown now with parking in the front. Were they grandfathered in or how did they, how is this going to stand with them?
Well, Mr. Sommers, this ordinance became effective July one, twenty twenty-one. So from this day forward, this is, this will cover any expansion of fifty percent or more or new buildings. So existing buildings are fine.
All right, so it's okay for the ones that already have this.
Yes, sir. And I think Laird Thomas has a hand up.
I did. I would just like to say that, uh, the only thing I've been objecting to primarily is the word governmental, existing governmental. If, if like Laurie and Chance and, and Jerry said, you know, if it said ABC board, I'd have no problem with it. So, thank.
Yeah, I guess just for the board's consideration, I'll, I'll just leave everything out there and, um, however the board wishes to make their recommendation, we'll just obviously proceed accordingly.
Mr. Coinis, are you still sharing your screen? Was this, I see that as opposed to the other board members.
Um, that's Mr. Royster's screen.
Okay, Mr. Royster, thank you. I wasn't able to see who had the hand up. Uh, well, that being said, is there any?
This is a complicated motion, I.
Oh, Mr. Thomas.
Well, I, I, you, I think I'm probably not going to word it right, but you know, we approved it last time and can I just say that, that make a motion to approve again, I guess that would probably be wrong. Approve the ABC plan as, as a, as presented. And recommend that they go to the Board for variance. I mean, is that, is that proper, a proper motion?
Yeah, so what you're saying, Mr. Thomas, is that the, that the text amendment would allow ABC stores in the B one district as a permitted use. And so, um, as you stated before, they have the option of applying for variance under the design guidelines.
Or if they, or if they would amend the wording, the text amendment to, to just say ABC store, I would have no problem with that. That would be fine with me. And then you could skip the, the Board of Adjust.
And I think, Mr. Quanis.
You know, I get the feeling that everybody wants the, wants the amendment to stay and, uh, or the ordinance to stay. I, maybe in this particular case, it doesn't make that much difference, but which makes it confusing. I'm conflicted.
Well, I, I think you'd have a question. You have a question of either one, going to get the variance or two, took the text amendment to say ABC, um, just for the ABC board. And so I think the board has to, somebody has to make a motion either to do the ABC board as a text amendment or to say they have to go get a variance. So I think, I think that's kind of the feelings of, I think the board is looking at.
The only concern that I would have is I would hate for this board to be in a situation where every time someone wants, uh, a variance or, or wants to be accepted from it is it's, you get the same text amendment and where it says from an existing ABC or an existing this or an existing that, and then we end up uh, with four or five or six text amendments exempting one individual or, or you know, one particular type of business. Um, so understanding that it, it may be more appropriate if ABC is, is permitted, is a permitted use and then we just leave it for the Board of Adjustment to provide the variance.
Well, my response to that is, you know, there was a mistake made. Now, who made the mistake? You know, we didn't catch it. The staff didn't catch it. The engineers didn't catch it. You know, it was one of those things. So to me, it's just a one-off. If we, if we just clearly recognize that we want the ABC store where it's at and we don't care if the parking's in the front or the side. Uh, you know, we're good to go and hopefully it would never come up again because now someone would catch it and say, you know, they, they approved it one time, but they're never approving it again. I, I don't really foresee it as a problem if it's, says clearly says ABC, but I don't want to get that one, but let's see how it goes. So that's my motion. I don't even know if I'd get a second. I might not.
Okay, i- is the motion, is your motion for a permitted use and a text amendment um, for an existing ABC?
Yeah.
All right, there is a motion to allow the, uh, um, uh, an ABC store is a permitted use in the central business district and, uh, a text amendment to, um, to permit uh, a waiver of the parking location on an expansion of an existing ABC location. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
There is a, in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Wilkerson, I need to, to understand, does the, uh, uh, does this motion also have to carry with it a motion that this is an conformity, uh, with the unified plan?
Well, I think it's a change in the unified plan, to be honest.
Okay, so we don't need to.
I mean, I think it's, it, it's somewhat, I mean, it's somewhat a change. I mean, it's peculiar to one, the ABC store. I mean, I think it's uniform and the overall, um, yeah. Because it's a one, because it's a one-time thing.
All right. Well, that being said, then, we'll call for a vote on Mr. Thomas's, uh, motion. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion cares. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Thank you, Mr. Coinis. Uh, Ms. Dutra, thank you as well.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, board members.
The next matter, Ms. Hart, that I have is a review of the example of the mural, mural requirements from Hillsborough, Salisbury, Clayton, Rocky Mount.
That's correct.
Okay, um, are you going to speak on that? Do we have anybody to speak on that?
Well, um, I sent you some examples of sample mural guidelines from those stated, um, places. Uh, also sent this to members of the downtown board and you have the president here, um, Pierre, uh, Ms. Dutra. Um, she's involved with that group as well and I'm not sure if anyone else from that group is present, but we have them here to, um, make some comments and then I may have some comments afterwards.
Okay. Who wants to go first?
I don't, I can go first, just to add a little bit of context to how we got here.
All right.
Um, so, uh, name's Pierre. I'm the president of the DOE DC for short, uh, Downtown Economic Development Corporation. Um, I'm the new guy to the party, so I will, I'll defer to Laurie on all things that, uh, require any history associated with them from our perspective. But, uh, essentially, we started looking at, uh, murals and ways, you know, the DOE DC has always sort of played a role in incentivizing businesses, business owners, building owners to improve their spaces to, at the benefit of downtown. Uh, those incentives typically come from the DOE DC in forms of money, but also, uh, in ways to support uniformity um, for whether it be branding or just types of art or whatever. Uh, but we added this, uh, mural and art to our um, facade grant application a couple of years ago. Um, and as we started sort of collecting more information on murals and art, we found that, um, there really wasn't anything in our existing, in the city of Oxford's existing zoning, um, ordinances addressing um, murals or large pieces of public art. So if it had, uh, if a business had signage included in the art, it was captured there. Um, if it was not, then it was kind of, um, e- essentially, I guess you could kind of do whatever you wanted to do uh, to the side of a building. Um, and we wanted to make sure that we're doing this in a, in a reasonable way that focuses on the incentive, but also if the city of Oxford is going to, um, sort of, sort of grow with, with the, these times, there's a requirement for, there's some level of guidance required from a zoning standpoint. So there's a handful of examples that Ms. Hart pulled together. Um, we mainly were asking questions around, you know, what types of murals or large public art because it, it really could change the landscape of downtown. What is the approval process? What types of things would be, um, allowed? What types of standards exist? What types of surfaces could and couldn't be painted, uh, but really just sort of adding um, some uniformity to whatever the process is going to be. And I think from DOE DC's perspective, we just want to make sure that it's clear, um, what those sort of rules are, what will be allowed, what types of surfaces can be, um, painted or murals can be put up on top of. Uh, because sometimes they're covering historic pieces and sometimes they're not. So it was really just to, to add some framework to a conversation that's been had in other places and is starting to gain traction in Oxford and just trying to stay ahead of that development.
And then in, um, kind of email and a little bit back and forth with, um, Pierre, um, what we discussed was, um, if there was a request for a mural that, um, it will be included in terms of review process in the same fashion that the facade grant is, um, handled now. Um, and speaking with the city of Statesville, the way they handle theirs is for existing buildings. Then they have a committee to review murals. And if it was a new construct building, then it would be handled administratively. And I think, um, the city of Rocket Mount, their application process is pretty detailed and one that I kind of liked.
If I could just make one comment, Mr. Chairman, I think in looking at these, um, I agree with what Pierre has said and we expect that if, if the idea becomes popular, um, that there will be people looking for some grant possibilities through downtown. But even beyond that, I think the, the, the juxtaposition of this with what you guys do is when is it a sign, when is it not a sign? And I, I think there's, Cheryl did a really good job of pulling together some different ideas on how to go about it. I do think like Rocky Mount did, there's some really good definitions there of what constitutes artwork. Um, I think there's some really good, um, proposals there too about what you need to review it. You, you need a kind of a scale drawing so you know whether it's going to overwhelm some other feature. Um, I think the idea of an advisory board, an arts council or something might be a good idea. I don't, I mean, that's sort of a not anything we've had in a, a review capacity except for our, um, sort of our, um, landscaping kind of folks downtown, but not really with art. And I also think that is, we need to make it clear that this is not the opportunity to call, um, signage advertising art, right? So, um, I think if you're clear that it can't contain a, a commercial message and where it need, kind of where they need to be, any historic overlaps and those things that are in these ordinances that could probably be fashioned into one that Oxford could apply if you felt it was a good idea as a policy matter for those zones.
Is, is this an open discussion?
Sure.
Yes.
Uh, I, when I went through these things, of course, I know we're, haven't got a committee or we haven't got anybody to upset this. I just made a short list of things that ought to be considered in whatever the committee comes up with as criteria for this. One being, when, one of the, uh, samples we had required content neutral. That in this day and time is very, very difficult. That whoever makes this rules or regulations up has got to consider that part very carefully. The other is, of course, once it's up, who's going to keep it up? Is it building on its own? Is it the original artist or whoever? Uh, and one that, that, uh, came, made me laugh a little bit is one of them said it can only be hand painted, hand tiled or digitally printed. Is one of them said that it can only be hand painted, hand tiled or digitally printed. Are they going to take the building down and run it to a printer? Or are they going to make a big printed chart and just hang it? I don't know what a digitally printed building looks like. But these are things that I think. Whoever comes up with the responsibility of creating the criteria has to look at some of these things very carefully.
I think, George, to, to your point, when we started reviewing these and it was coming up because we were looking at ways to, art is very sort of much in the eye of the beholder, right? And the idea of trying to add uniformity or consistency in content was a little scary. Um, I, I think just having no zoning at all is also pretty scary. So I agree with you when you talk about things, making sure they're not so subjective. That this committee of people either has. An impossible task, you know, be, or, or just evolved so much over time that there is no consistency. It was trying to find that happy medium, uh, to make sure that we, we want to promote. People to, you know, look at these big canvases on the side of buildings and try to find something cool to do with them. Um, but you know, somebody might think that. How, how do we, how do we draw the line between when spray paint is art and when spray paint is vandalism? It is starting, that's sort of where the conversation started.
Well, I don't want to get into subjects real deep, but in this day and age. There's a lot of people that take offense at most anything. One side will take offense if the other side puts up a. Picture of, you know, whoever. Uh, the other side's going to take offense if it comes down or if it's not there. Uh, you're just going to, whoever makes up these regulations, rules or suggestions is going to have to be very careful. And you're going to have to find. Some very astute people to get on this committee to, to be able to handle this.
Uh, I have a question, uh, Chairman Wicker. Uh, is our role in this regard for item B under new business to, uh. To decide, I mean, if there, to, I mean, what is our role here? What, I mean, what are we supposed to make a move of and review all the. Examples and the different guidelines for different cities that Cheryl has appropriately provided for us. However, moving forward, I mean, is there? Uh, a downtown review committee specifically passed. With the purpose of approving, uh, the artwork in this regard. You know, or, or, are, are we supposed to do that? Or are we supposed to? You know, what, what, what is our role here? I guess I'm just trying to figure that out.
Well, i- in the past, when we have, um. Line items that are. Listed as for consideration, it's, it's typically Ms. Hart's, uh, bringing it to our attention for the first time. So that we first can start considering if they need to be included in the zoning or something that planning board would oversee. Uh, Ms. Hart, is this something you were looking for, uh, action on? Or is this something that we're, uh, to consider going forward and to. Uh, to bring back before the board when we have more, a more, um, uh, consistent or more concrete plan? You're muted right now, Cheryl.
I think what I'm looking for is a call to action. What is our call to action?
Okay, so what I wanted was to review what we have and then I can draft a, um, application. For you all to consider as part of the guidelines. The Board of Commissioners, they will have the right to adopt those guidelines and. Appoint a committed, i- if they don't want to use, say, for instance, the facade, um, type of overview. And if they want a committed, somebody from the HPC committee, somebody from the planning board. And some, you know, just a representative of all the various boards. Um, they may decide to do that, but I just wanted some feedback so I can at least draft something that you all want to, um. Pass forward to our Board of Commissioners to consider a- as long, as well as a review board. If they wanted to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
Uh, yes, uh. I, we need to really move forward very quickly with this, in my opinion. I think it's going to be one of the. Best things that's happened to the city in a long time. I think that, uh, the committee should be very little representation from the city. Except to have a maintenance agreement, try and set some sort of guidelines when, uh, the. Pictures on the wall fade or need to be replaced or need to be painted over. And I think the easiest way to accomplish that is to make sure that the people we appoint. At least two or three of them own the building. They may not necessarily operate the business out of the building, but they own the building. I think those people should have a very large say. In what goes downtown. And I agree with Cheryl that the HPC should have a voice in what goes downtown, so. Uh, I think the quicker we can put a committee together, let the committee come up with the criteria. For the application and all that, we, we really don't need to mess with that. I, I think they'll be better able to handle it than we will. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Uh, Pierre, I want Pierre and Lori, I want to ask this. When, when you were looking at these, um, recommendations, when you talk about commercial use. And I hadn't, I've seen her thinking, I, I can't think of anywhere in Oxford this applies to, but I know in Lewisburg. They had, I think, an old Coca-Cola sign and an old RCA that they went back and repainted. So that's kind of a commercial use, but at the same time it was an old ad. I was wondering if there's any provision for that in here. Somebody wanted to revive something that was an old, you know, old commercial sign or anything like that.
They had that exact situation on Parrish Street, downtown Durham. It's an old Pepsi Cola sign and an old Wrigley's chewing gum sign.
Right.
I think, I think the idea is not to have it be an advertisement for that business. Um.
Right.
Those are, like in New Bern too, you've got the Pepsi, you know, and I, I think that there certainly would be. A review, you know, review that if it was, especially if it was a historic site itself that had been there for years. You'd of course want to keep that for that purpose, but you know, the idea is to let a business put a huge sign for their business. Just for calling it a mural, yeah. But I think we could probably get that. I, I would like to suggest that as Cheryl looks at this. Um, maybe to allow the, the DOEDC has a design committee. That has a, a, a downtown art subcommittee. We're trying to like think of ways, not so much all murals, but. You've probably seen the artwork that Pierre worked really hard with the city, um, Public Works Director to put up the sculptures that are downtown, which will be rotating. Um, maybe we could work with you on that, Cheryl, and either let you draft and let us help or we're, we're here to help.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and, and draft something and send it to you all and get the feedback and we'll go from there.
That'd be great.
So Cheryl, would we be able to see what you send to them?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Ms. Edwards, you could always come to a meeting.
If I was invited, I would.
I've, I've, I've already solicited, Ms. Rogers.
Nobody sent me a, a, a invite. I would definitely be there. Especially if it's got to do with art and what goes up and what is rejected and who has a voice in it. Um, I don't know what your board looks like. I don't know if it represents everybody in the city. Um, but I would be more than happy to, to come and to be a part of that.
I, I was going to say, that sounds a lot like come to our meeting, we will put you on the board.
Yeah, you will. You know, I, I caught that part too. But it would be nice to be, to be invited instead of bogarting. I don't even know when you meet. Um, I could, um, get my email to you.
So I, um, I have everybody's email and.
If you would send that to Ms. Dutra for me, please, Cheryl, I would appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. So what I, um, draft, I, I just thought of, um, a draft of an application and, um. And we'll just go from there and we can change and. Add, delete and do whatever we need to do so we can move it forward.
Before we close, if I could just address one thing that, uh, Mr. Summers said, and I, I know he was making a joke about. Uh, digitally, three D, making a digital building. What it is, is the way they make billboards now. They run it through a computer and print it out. And if you've ever seen them out there now. They unroll it and glue it to the billboard where in the past. They would literally hand paint it on the billboard, but way in the past. That's how they used to do it. So. If somebody had a design that they used a digital printer. And they make these gigantic sixty foot images, that would be something. It would still be a mural because it's up on a wall. So that's a, another medium other than paint or sculpture or wood or relief like that.
Wow. Great info.
I wanted to see that building go through.
I know, I know, right? Well, you know, they are making three D buildings now. Um, those three D printers, they're making houses now and. And they're very interesting. I mean, you can get a concrete house made for about fifteen thousand dollars. Not including the wiring and the plumbing, which is really not bad. I don't know what our, what our guidelines are around here, but you know, that's kind of inviting when you look at the price of housing right now. So, but yeah, those three D printers are, I, I love, I, I would love to get one, a small one for our use here. I got my own one, so. But yes, I, I would more than happy, be willing to join with you all, Ms. Dutra. And Pierre.
We'd love to have you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Hart, do you have anything else for the planning board?
No, I just want to thank everybody for their participation. Um, we had a lively meeting and, um. Just thank you. I, I appreciate everyone's participation.
You're welcome.
Thank you, everyone, for coming and for all who've joined us. Uh, with that, the. Planning board will, you guys stuff him, Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, can we, can, can we quit having Zoom meetings? I don't like them. I'd rather see all your smiling faces in person.
When that pandemic is over, we might consider that, but it ain't going over yet. Unless Cheryl can put us in the auditorium down there at City Hall. So we can spread out.
Over is still in charge, Larry.
Well, you know, I've, I can make a motion. We can vote on it. Yeah, I wish we would consider getting back together. I, I miss y'all. It's, it's awful, so.
I have one question.
I miss him.
I have one question about these Zoom meetings. I saw Larry did it earlier. I don't know anything about computers or very little. How do you put your hand up? I know Larry's had his hand up a while ago.
I'll probably physically put his hand up.
And if you press that button under your screen that says reactions, it, it says you can raise your hand or thumbs up, thumbs down.
All right, I see it now. Thank you.
Yeah.
See? We hit the learn. That's how it goes.
We're in trouble when we have Larry giving us lessons on how to raise your hand. Oh, man. We're in trouble is all I can say.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening. Uh, continue to stay safe and look forward to being with you next time.
Yes.
Thank you. Good night.
Have a good evening.